Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. Okay. Call the meeting to order again. Welcome to the January 17th meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices. And we'll all take dibs on who's going to be the first one whose phone rings. And we have a treat this evening. Our Vice Mayor, James Chambers, is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge and the historic fun fact, if you would please stand.
Lord, we ask your blessings upon our meeting this evening. Grant us the wisdom and the compassion in our efforts to move our city forward. Help us to reach sound decisions that promote the common good of all. We bow before you this day in remembrance and thanksgiving for the life and legacy of your faithful servant, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We thank you for his inspired words and writings, for his integrity of life and his dignity of soul, and for his leadership. Dr. King continues to inspire millions of people today, all over the world, people of every religion and creed, people of every color and ethnic heritage, people young and old, rich and poor alike, to rise above themselves and to realize that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Give us this same courage to live by what we profess and believe. We thank you for the gift of our amazing city and for the freedoms we enjoy as citizens of this great country. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the fun fact I picked, and it's a little more than a fact, it's kind of almost a story, but we'll see. It's how the Omar K. Lightfoot Recreation Center started. In September of 1959, Mr. Omar K. Lightfoot donated land for the construction of the Temple Terrace Youth Center. The property was located, of course, at 56th Street and White Way Drive. At that time, the land was valued at $15,000. The Optimist Club members headed a movement to raise funds for the proposed construction of a youth center and urged other civic and service organizations to assist. It was not a city facility at that time. Funds for completion of the building were not secured in the next three years, and only the framework was finished. Then in 1962, nine different civic clubs organized a group chartered as the Temple Terrace Youth Center Incorporated. A building committee was appointed in January of 1963. And it changed its name to the Temple Terrace Recreation Center Foundation Incorporated. By September 1965, the Omar K. Lightfoot Center was open to the public. This opening came after many years of starting and stopping by several sponsoring organizations, and when it was finally completed, it was done so with assistance and funding by the Hillsborough County Commission. After that, the city of Temple Terrace received the deed to the Lightfoot Center in 1969. So what's interesting about that, I found some old budgets, and the Recreation Department budget, in that time it was just the Recreation Department, in 1968, personnel, total personnel cost was $16,000 for the department. The personnel was one director, Ken Boyd, the man that hired me, he was making $7,500 a year. He had one part-time secretary, a full-time custodian, and a part-time recreation aide. And that was the staff of the Recreation Department in 69. The operating budget was $19,000, and capital budget that year was $300 for one mimeograph machine. So the total budget was $38,000. Mr. Langfeld's department now, Leisure Services, has recreation parks and library, and his budget is just a little over $4 million. So you can see how it's changed over the years. And that's the history of Lightfoot, in a nutshell.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, that's interesting. So that's the same building from the '60s that's there now?
Yes, yes, and it's been renovated three different times.
Has it been added to, or is that the same?
No, it's the same footprint.
Same footprint.
Same footprint. And if you pull down the drywalls, you'll see the metal framing that stood, I mean, like a carcass of bones for three years back in the early '60s, it just, the frames just stood there.
When did it become a senior center? Was that after the Family Rec Center opened, or do you know?
No, it became a senior center, oh, I don't know, 10 years ago? I mean, when we had our, the second renovation of Light, third renovation of Lightfoot, so...
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. Our next item is approval of the January 3rd City Council meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, other corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays, the minutes are adopted. Next, are persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda? I like to read this part every so often, so if it comes up, people don't think we just made it up. This is not an issue tonight, but just FII, the council does have a 30-minute time limit on all public comment during this portion of the meeting, and if we run out of time, we allocate time at the end of the meeting to resume that. It's not an issue tonight, I just like to say that once in a while, so that if it does happen, people don't think we just made that up on the fly. That is a standing rule. We do have a three-minute time limit imposed on all comments from each member of the public. We ask that speakers come to the podium, state your name and city of residence. I do have, I think, one request to speak currently. If there are other members of the public who wish to address the council, there are forms in the back of the room, just put your name and pass them to the clerk, and you will be called. The one I have right now is for Annette Rennie. Good evening, Mrs. Rennie.
Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. I'm here to ask council and mayor for transparency. I wasn't able to make the last meeting where the park was spoke about again, the preserve, but I was able to watch it. And I'd like to thank, I was going to call you Congressman, a council member, Allison Fernandez, for speaking up about how it was done and how it was supposed to remain when we first started the preserve. I think Joe Affronti was mayor, and he met with just anybody and everybody in our subdivision that he could meet with, and really took us seriously. We didn't want buses, we didn't want a bunch of people back there, we wanted it to be a walking preserve, quiet nature. Somehow, the lack of transparency and meeting with our neighborhoods, which there are three and now going to be four, was not done. And Mr. Ross, Mayor Ross, you were one who spoke up and said, "I don't want to go there anymore, we've already talked about this." Well, you know what, you're the mayor, and we elected you, and you represent us. And from now on, if there's an issue in our subdivision or any area in Temple Terrace, and I'm not trying to be nasty, it needs to be discussed with the people that it's going to affect. Several people got to watch it on TV and heard Allison speak, and we appreciate you talking about it, because it was to be the least invasive development, not what we're doing now. And you represent us, it's not the other way around. So we need to be informed, and I expect that in the future, whether it's our subdivision or any place in the city of Temple Terrace, that we be informed and we be able to speak about it and have an opinion. I know the city didn't like taking care of it, it was made very apparent. So in the future, please, transparency. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council at this So just a note for those who are watching, Ms. Rennie, I did meet with several groups of citizens on several different occasions, including last week after our meeting. I think each one of us went out there and visited the site. So it's not true that we did not go out there and we didn't talk to residents. And it's also not true that we didn't do this in public, it was discussed at great length during public council meetings a year and a half, two years ago. So just because you don't get the outcome you like does not imply that we're not being transparent. Next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, consent agenda is adopted. I forgot to mention, we do have one item that's going to be postponed for anybody who's here to speak on it, and that is, this is oversight on my part, item 8C regarding RZP 22-03, which is the rezoning of the property, a petition to rezone the property located at 5210 East Fowler Avenue. That item will be called up, but it will be called up and then there'll be a request to postpone it. So if you're here just for that item, I want to make sure I let you know that. So the next item is the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1541, amending section 22-56 of the city code relating to the rates, fees, and charges for water irrigation and wastewater. I'll open the public hearing and ask Finance Director Jim Ingram to explain. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ross and City Council. We are here for a second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1541, amending section 2256 of the city code relating to the rates, fees, and charges for water irrigation and wastewater services. Staff recommends that the council adopt upon second hearing and second reading of ordinance 1541, the amendment to section 2256 of the city of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to the rates, fees, and charges for the water, irrigation, and wastewater services, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Chapter 166 of the Florida statutes, the legislator of the state of Florida confers upon local governments the authority to adopt regulations designed to promote public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizenry. Section 180 dot 13-2 authorizes the city council to establish just and equitable rates or charges for the use of the utilities. Predetermined caps on rate increases, such as the U.S. Consumer Price Index, may not be compatible with the local economic conditions and/or fiscal demands on the city's utilities. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, any questions for Mr. Ingram? None, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending section 22-56 of the city of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to the rates, fees, and charges for water, irrigation, and wastewater services, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with herewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, is there a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1541 on second reading, amending section 22-56 of the city code relating to rates, fees, and charges for water, irrigation, and wastewater services.
Second. Motion to second, discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Ordinance 1541 is adopted on second reading. Next, the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1542, amending section 22-88 of the city code relating to the rates, fees, and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recycling services. Open the public hearing, and Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain.
Yes, second, this is the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1542, amending section 22-88 of the city code relating to the rates, fees, and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recycling services. Staff recommends that the council adopt upon second hearing of the amendment to section 22-88 of the city of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to the rates, fees, and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Chapter 166 of the Florida statutes, the legislator of the state of Florida confers upon local governments the authority to adopt regulations designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizenry. Section 180 dot 13-2 authorizes the city council to establish just and equitable rates or charges for the use of the utilities. Predetermined caps on rate increases, such as U.S. Consumer Price Index, may not be compatible with local economic conditions and/or fiscal demands on the city's utilities. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Council members, are there any questions for Mr. Ingram? I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending section 22-88 of the city of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to the rates, fees, and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 1542 upon second reading.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion on the ordinance? Not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign, no nays, ordinance 1542 is adopted on second reading. Next is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance approving the zoning reclassification of 5210 East Fowler Avenue, otherwise known as RZP 22-03. I'll open the public hearing, and Senior Planner Gus Carpus is here to explain.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, as you mentioned earlier...
It's polled? Yes.
Yes.
We're getting to that.
Yes, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the applicant has requested that this item be continued for its first reading at February 7th meeting, and then we would have the second public hearing at February 21st meeting. They're asking if we could open the public hearing and then continue it till the February 7th meeting.
Very good. Council members, are there questions for Mr. Carpus? Okay, if none, I'll close the public hearing, and at this point, I'll entertain a motion to postpone the item until February 7th. Is there such a motion?
Move to postpone till February 7th.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays, the item is set for February the 7th. Thank you. Next is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance for a land development code text amendment, amending section 12-304 as it relates to maximum permitted building height within the Temple Terrace Downtown Overlay District. In the public hearing, Senior Planner Gus Carpus will explain.
Okay. I have a PowerPoint. Okay, so I'll just repeat what the mayor just said. You were looking at the first public hearing and reading of an ordinance for a land development code text amendment, which would amend section 12304B as it relates to the maximum permitted building height within the Temple Terrace Downtown Overlay District. It's text, TXT 2301. So on May, and this is going to be kind of a wordy one to give you some background, on May 16, 2006, the city council adopted ordinance 1173, enacting a new ordinance creating the downtown community redevelopment overlay zoning district from what was previously known as the Business District Redevelopment Plan Overlay District, the CRA. This ordinance expanded the design guidelines and standards to be used by the city of Temple Terrace when reviewing new development in the expanded CRA. On December 15, 2015, the city council adopted ordinance 1383, approving the creation of the downtown overlay district for certain city-owned properties within the downtown community redevelopment area. So, and unfortunately, I looked at this right before I came up here, I didn't include a map. So you have the CRA area, but within it, it created an overlay district which included the three city-owned properties where Paragon is, our vacant land, just, that includes Enigma and the area where the old Steak and Ale was, and then, actually, actually, it's only those two pieces, the one on the river was not included. So the ordinance, the new ordinance, created more restrictive regulations, including those related to height. And then those regulations that were included in 1383 said, none of the regulations in 1173 applied, only the new regulations created in this ordinance applied to those two properties. So essentially, it created its own zoning district within the CRA. It's not switching for me. So this created a situation where different standards for determining height were being used between the CRA and the overlay district, wherein the CRA, a height of 80 feet or six stories, whichever was most restrictive, applied in the overlay district, or in the CRA, but in the overlay district, it permitted a height of five stories, but it had no foot requirement. So the one said, you're going to go 80 feet or six stories, whichever is more restrictive. But in the overlay district, it just said five stories. So if you had five stories at 20 feet, you go 100 feet. So I mean, there was no cap on the actual foot height of the building. So the folks, the Taurus Investors Group, the developer who was previously approved by the council to develop the old Steak and Ale property, which is located in the overlay district, the downtown overlay district, has requested an amendment to the section 12-304B as it relates to the maximum permitted height. And so when we go to the existing ordinance, again, it reads, maximum building height is five stories, excluding the crown of the building, and then the minimum height is two stories. And then that the landowner may increase the height to exceed five stories, and that such a request shall be subject to approval of the city council based on compatibility of the surrounding development, aesthetic design, and conformity with the downtown urban development, which isn't necessarily true, because if you go further in the ordinance, it says a waiver is required. And a waiver is, has to meet the same criteria as a variance, which is basically a hardship, which would be difficult to prove if you wanted to go to six stories. So the proposed change would be, would be taking out the first line and saying, "No building shall exceed 80 feet in height excluding the crown of the building," and then saying, "It may exceed that height, such a request shall be subject to the grant of a waiver as outlined in section 12306." So essentially, we're taking out the maximum story, putting a maximum 80-foot cap on it, which they could exceed with a waiver, which again, would be just like showing a hardship of why they cannot build what they need to build. It gives them flexibility to build a number of stories within that 80-foot. Again, that 80-foot matches what's in the CRA currently, so the overlay district in the CRA would match in their height requirement. So the community development staff is supportive of, the city council approving the first reading of the ordinance as it relates to the maximum permitted height within the Temple Terrace Downtown Overlay District. Again, this was a request by the Taurus Group, there is a representative here. They also provided some information that was put in front of your spaces tonight, showing their site plan and the proposed concept hotel that they had brought earlier. So Mr. Martin is here to answer any questions.
The applicant, I assume, would like to speak, seems to be approaching. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Our request is to have the waiver granted, so we can construct a six-story hotel with a rooftop bar and restaurant. And it's driven by economics and the feasibility study that we've received on the property. And it, we feel that because of the unique location of it, that the east side of it faces River Park, there's no immediate neighbor right to the east of us, to the north of us, we're overlooking the CRA district and Enigma to the east, you know, we're looking at gas bars and, you know, the gas station across the street there. And to the south of us, you know, we were partly in front of the entrance to Riverside Park and across the street from the little building and the Shell Station there. So we feel that we're in a unique location and the additional height is not really going to impact any neighbors or anything. It's going to really enhance the presence, you know, as you come into the city of Temple Terrace, especially with the other development that we're going to be doing in the area. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you very much, sir. So in our order of procedure here, we now take public comment, and then, so if you and Mr. Carpus want to have a seat, but don't go far, because then we'll have council member questions. So I do have a couple of requests to speak on this item. The first one is from David Pogorlitch. Welcome, Mr. Pogorlitch.
Thank you. If I can stray just a bit, I'd like to see if we can have maybe a Throwback Thursday and have all the directors go back to that salary. But as to this particular item, I'm all in favor. I think it's a great idea. I think that the use in the, having a rooftop restaurant would be good for the city. Certainly, you got to take a look at the site plan and review the site plan, but I was actually on council when we went through that whole machination, and a lot of it had to do with parking. And the waiver was there, I guess we probably didn't think it all the way through, it was, you could, it wasn't a fixed five stories or six stories, you could exceed that as long as you got the waiver and you had the parking. So the intent was the same, I think you guys have cleaned it up a little bit, but I'm all in favor of allowing them to go seven stories and, you know, just how fast can they get it done? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pogorlitch. I have one other request at this time to speak, Jan Tumbleson. Welcome, Ms. Tumbleson. Welcome, Ms. Tumbelson.
Mayor, Mayor, Council, I appreciate the time. Okay, I have no problem with this development. I think it's an excellent use of the property, and we would like to have it, thank you. My, my concern is the fact that the notices or text amendments, changes, okay, need to be noticed, at least posted on the property. So residents around the area can see, and if they want to, come to the meeting. Right now, because of Florida statutes and the ordinance of Temple Terrace, they're only required, tax amendments are only required to have two notices in the newspaper. Now, I'm suggesting that we at least post the property and possibly, at your direction, send letters to the adjacent residents or the business owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tumbelson. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council on this item? So council members, if you'll indulge me just a second prior to questions. The reason that we follow, just for anybody watching and, and Ms. Tumbelson, we, like all cities that, that I'm aware of anyway, um, we follow the state law on the notice requirements. We don't exceed that, and there's a reason why cities don't do that, because if, once you start exceeding what the law says and going further, now you have raised the bar on yourself, and then when you don't do that on a certain project, you've opened yourself up to challenges, because they say, well, you, you exceeded the legal requirements on this one and this one and this one, but you didn't on this one. And so that's the reason that we follow the state law. All cities do that, as far as, oh, at least the ones I'm familiar with. Because once you exceed that, it's the same with public records, you follow the law. If you start making, putting your more restrictive measures on yourself and exceeding what's legally required, then you've created a challenge if, when, in a case where you don't do that. So that's why we don't do that, we just follow the state law, so. Council members, questions? Council Member Abel.
My question's for Mr. Karpas. I think, I'd like to thank Mr. Pogorilich for mostly answering this question, but I was wondering if in your research, when you looked back at the two thousand and five CRA ordinance and the twenty sixteen overlay district ordinance, if, if you, in your research, you found any reasoning for why it became more restrictive for that area?
I actually did not, but I saw that he was, uh, on the council, so I went to him, and, and there really wasn't a reason. Uh, I just think that at the, at the time, they had more control over those properties, cuz they were city-owned. But there was not a stated reason in the minutes, cuz I read back, they actually did a study, and there was really nothing that said why they limited it the way it did. I, just the ordinance, and that's the way it was, and then, um, there was really nothing, I'm sorry.
No, no problem at all, thank you.
Okay. But brief, briefly here, briefly.
I just wanna make clear that the, when, when that was originally intended, it wasn't, it wasn't fixed. There was ways around it, you could get, you could go higher if you provided a parking garage, for instance, and you, you would get the waiver. So the intent was not to simply say, no, you couldn't go higher. The intent was to, um, to better control and have enough parking for whoever, whatever was going to go in there. That's what the intent was.
Thank you.
It was never a fixed five stories. It was five stories, but if you, if you provided onsite parking, you provided a parking garage, you could go higher. And you could get, there was credits involved and everything else, so, uh, just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pogorilich.
The ordinance wasn't written that way.
Yes, I understand. Council Member Schisler.
Yes, um, with respect to the rooftop, would that, is that consider, with the, being a bar and not just a crown, would that be considered another floor?
And, and that's where the, the question comes in. If they enclose half of it, does that become a story? I mean visually, is it a story? And I think that's a discussion we've had, is if it's just an open rooftop with a railing, you know, that may not be considered a story, but if you start enclosing half of it, you would almost count it as a story.
I mean, you're gonna have an elevator goes up here, there's gonna be seven in all likelihood, I would imagine.
Yeah, and so, you know, as long as you keep that all under the eighty feet.
How, how, well, how tall is the plan? Do we know?
First, the rooftop restaurant and bar is intended to be approximately four thousand square feet of conditioned area, which would include the elevator shafts and everything going up there, having the kitchen and a sit-down eating space on the inside, as well as, um, outside seating on the rooftop deck along with seating groups, um, scattered about. So essentially, uh, we're going six stories of, of hotel with rooms, and so however you interpret it, whether it's a crown or a seven-story, we're, we're looking to put approximately four thousand square feet of enclosed.
Well, that, that's fine, what do we, what do we anticipate until the height, the overall height being?
Less than eighty feet.
Less than eighty feet, okay, well, that's good. And this, my second question is more for, for, for our attorney. Could we not fix the minimum while we're do- while we're fixing the, uh, what are we going for? Are we going to change the ordinance, are we going to, uh, grant a variance? I guess is my question, if we're gonna fix the ordinance.
We're revising the ordinance.
If we're gonna fix the ordinance, can we fix the minimum heights too? Cuz there's nothing over there, it's two stories. Nothing in that area.
This is your chance to fix it.
That's what I'm saying, if we can do it, that'd be great.
The minimum has been two stories, and when someone has come in for a waiver, they've still been told to make their facade look like it's two stories, and that's what's been done in, in that corner so far, so.
Okay.
And I think the same thing with Winn-Dixie. I think that they ended up with a large facade there to make it look taller than it really is.
Do the other, do the other air, units in that area have the, the second facade, really? Is it?
Yes, so they, that's been consistent in the design.
Okay, all right, that, that's all I got, um, I, that's a good deal.
Council Member Fernandez.
I was on council when this was, this ordinance was passed, and the, the history is that we were coming out of city-led charrettes and city and community, resident-led planning to create a very dense, walkable downtown area. And the goal was to set design standards and the, and the building criteria to be, to look more like a city versus a s- a traditional, what we've seen in suburban sprawl. So that's where a lot of this, the height requirements and the two-story requirement minimum came into play. And where this may seem, it was restrictive in, in a lot of ways, because the city wanted to maintain a lot of control over what actually got built in the space. Uh, I'm not opposed to this, the modifications that we're making here, but that's just what the thought process was. We were still, we were coming out of this time period where residents wanted to have a lot of control and a lot of say over what was built and the design aspect. And it hasn't really been very practical in terms of development. So I'm not opposed to this, to these changes, but that's why, that's where the two-story minimum also came about.
Thank you, council member, anything else?
No.
Okay, so remember, we're questions primarily, we're gonna have discussion. Vice Mayor, any questions?
I have a question, quick question for the applicant. First of all, um, thank you. I remember, um, when you first came before us and pitched the idea, one of the things that I really was kinda just a little sad about, I was happy to see the project, but I was like, man, we really need a restaurant. And so I really appreciate you and your team, um, I don't know if it was because of my question, but I appreciate, however it came about, uh, I'm grateful for you adding a restaurant, because I think in our city, that's an important component of what we're trying to achieve, uh, in the downtown. And so I think that's gonna add, uh, significant value. The project was good already, I was, but I think this really is a tremendous project. So the only question I have for you is, the, the only concern I see is that, uh, the open-air bar portion, which is a great addition to the, to the downtown, and I know we're not doing site plan, but I would ask that your team, um, consider that the, the nearest residences to that are primarily to the east and maybe the southeast. And so if there's a way to orient that so that the enclosed restaurant portion is closer to the residence, because I'm assuming outdoor bar implies you're gonna have music and that kinda thing, and it would be better if that were directed at Fifty-Sixth Street as opposed to the neighborhood. Just, just kind of a, so I don't know how far down the funnel you guys are, but if there's a way to kinda have that thought in mind.
Certainly, I, I appreciate the feedback, and I'm glad we're both aligned on the concept. We, we feel that the unique location and, and having the asset of looking out on the Hillsborough River, over riverfront, Riverside Park and, and portions of the city, you know, is invaluable to help draw people to that development and the whole CRA district of Temple Terrace. So that's where the, uh, concept came from, but I'm glad you, you agree with it.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir.
And we'll certainly look at orienting sound, keeping sound away from the, uh, the residential area to the east.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. And I, Mr. Karpas, I have a question for you also that, that actually, um, Mr. Pogorilich kinda hit on this a little bit with the parking. Are we fairly confident that we're gonna be able to get the sufficient number of parking spaces into this property for that size of a building?
Well, I think one of the weaknesses of our, uh, our ordinance is we have no minimum parking requirements. And that's something that I've brought up, you know, just a couple of times in discussions, is I believe you have a hundred and eight parking spaces, and you have eighty, eighty rooms and retail space and, and so I'm a little concerned about the parking, um, that there may not be enough, but there isn't anything to tie it to in the ordinance to say, hey, you don't have enough parking.
Okay, so that could be a concern.
It could be a concern, correct, especially if the bar and restaurant are open to the public.
Yes, you, you're welcome to come back up.
Mr. Singh, the owner of Enigma next door, um, he has offered us, uh, shared parking of forty parking places. Apparently, he has excess parking on his parcel in exchange for, um, providing an access egress point to the rear of his property. He's severely constrained on parking. You know, if we developed our property without any access egress points, um, you know, he, everybody would have to turn around and, and, you know, head back north to exit his property. On our original site plan, we did provide a, a cross-access point on the front portion of his property, but with our, and we don't wanna change what we have presented to the city, but, um, I wanted to let you know that, that we do have a verbal agreement with him that if we were to add a access point towards the rear of our property, that he would grant us forty shared parking places, which will enhance the parking for the overall development, so.
Mr. Karpas, would that bring us closer to the?
Oh, much, much closer. I just, I was getting concerned with eighty rooms and a hundred and eight spaces. That was, you know, that's getting cut, that leaves you twenty-eight, and then you have, uh, I don't know how many square foot of retail, plus you just got the beauty shop. That's another, you know, retail-type spot, so then you're starting to get really tight there. But another forty spaces will go a long way.
Council members, other questions? Alrighty, then, uh, that case, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida relating to the maximum permitted building height within the Temple Terrace Downtown Overlay District, amending section twelve dash three oh four of the city of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, is there a motion?
Move to approve first public hearing of the ordinance for land development code text amendment, section twelve dash three oh four, uh, regard, uh, regarding maximum permitted height, building height.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Ordinance twelve dash three zero four is adopted on first reading and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, February the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Karpas. Thank you to the applicant. Next item is a resolution approving an increase in rates, fees, and charges for water irrigation and wastewater services. Finance Director Jim Ingram will return to explain.
Good evening again. Uh, staff recommends that council adopt this resolution to increase the residential and commercial rates, fees, and charges for water irrigation and wastewater services by five percent pursuant to section twenty-two fifty-six of the city code. Increase shall go into effect on February first, two thousand and twenty-three. Effective with the billing cycle on or after February first, two thousand and twenty-three, the water irrigation and wastewater rates would be as follows. Increase the water and irrigation consumption rate from two dollars and sixteen cents to two dollars and twenty-seven cents per one thousand gallons up to eight thousand gallons. Increase the water and irrigation rate, consumption rate over eight thousand gallons per month from three dollars and sixty cents to three dollars and seventy-eight cents per gallon. Increase the wastewater rate from ten dollars and thirty-six cents to ten dollars and eighty-eight cents per thousand gallons. A full list of the new proposed rates is included in exhibit one. An average water irrigation and wastewater monthly bill for residential consumers based on six thousand gallons water and wastewater use per month and three thousand gallons of irrigation use per month look accordingly. The current monthly bill, this is a typical average water bill. Based on that gallon usage, the current bill would be around ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents. The new monthly bill would be a hundred and two dollars and fifty-nine cents. And of course, if you wanted to even it all out and say, well, a hundred dollars, if your bill's a hundred dollars a month, it would be a hundred and five dollars a month. So you're, it's basically an increase of five dollars per a hundred. Let's see, I think I do have a slide here, there we go. That is the solid rates, solid ways.
You have it.
Sorry, okay, there we go. So that everybody can see the numbers that I just spoke about. Uh, households using six thousand gallons, approximately a four dollar and eighty cent increase in their monthly combined water and wastewater bill. The change is based on increased operating costs, as we all know inflation and in this various, uh, cost operating has gone up, plus a three percent increase in the wastewater fees that we have to pay the city of Tampa. So I, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Council members, questions? Yes, City Manager, Mr. Beatty.
Thank you, just to clarify, uh, Mr. Ingram did a nice job in the presentation, but there's just one thing he said that I wanna make sure that the public, it doesn't leave with a wrong impression. Uh, when we talk about the increase in the water and irrigation rate over eight thousand gallons per month from three sixty to three seventy-eight, it's per one thousand gallons. I think Mr. Ingram may have said per gallon, uh, at that point, so I just wanna make sure it's clear, cuz that would be a pretty big bill, so, thank you.
That'd be a significantly different number. Very good. If there are no questions, is there a motion? If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution adopting the, amending the water and sewer rates for effective February 1st, 2023.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, resolution is adopted. Thank you. Next item is a resolution related approving an increase in residential and commercial rates, fees, and charges for city collection and disposal of solid waste and recycling of solid waste and recycling services. Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain.
Yes, let me put that slide up. There we go. City staff recommends that council adopt the resolution to increase the residential and commercial rates, fees, and charges for city collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables service by 10% pursuant to Section 2288 of the City Code. Increase to go into effect on February 1st, 2023. Effective with the billing cycle on or after February 1st, 2023, the monthly rates for city collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables service would be as follows. Increase the curbside collection rate from $28.21 to $31.3 per month. Increase the qualifying senior exemption residential curbside collection from $18 to $19.80 per month. Increase the commercial dumpster service monthly charges that range from $72.68 for a two-cubic yard dumpster with one collection per week to $1,285.15 for an eight-cubic yard dumpster with six collections per week. A full list, including that entire range of the commercial rates for dumpsters, is included in Exhibit 1. Again, for most people, for commercial and residential, for the trash carts, it's going to be $3 more a month, roughly $3 more. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Council members, are there questions for Mr. Ingram? Okay. If there are no questions, is there a motion?
I move to approve a resolution approving an increase in residential and commercial rates, fees, and charges for city collection and disposal of solid waste and recycling of solid waste and recycling services.
Second. Motion, second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I just want to comment hopefully briefly on this, because this is a significant increase. When we raise something 10%, that's a lot. And so I want to, I know we've had this discussion, but we might have viewers that weren't here for the previous, when I talked about this before. So, and I'll try to put a complicated thing into 30 seconds, but as most of you know, there are certain accounts within the city's budget that are called enterprise funds. The Water Fund is one of them, sanitation is one of them, we have a few. The enterprise funds, like the one that we're talking about now, the sanitation fund, the enterprise funds have nothing to do with your property taxes. They are completely funded by the cost of the service provided. So everything to do with sanitation comes completely from what you and businesses pay to have your trash picked up. And so everything, the goal is that we have to take in as much money as it costs to provide that service. We can't lose money. And now that doesn't, that includes the fuel it takes for the trucks, the purchasing of new trucks as the old ones wear out, paying the employees that operate this service, that do this work, disposal of the garbage, which is probably the biggest expense, and fuel, tires, all the things that you might imagine go in. So if you started a business to pick up the garbage in Temple Terrace, that's what this is. It's a business within the city. There are certain hard costs that the city has incurred that have gone up like everything else. Like, we don't, the sanitation department doesn't buy eggs at Publix, but that's an example, right? All of a sudden, things are costing 300% of what they used to cost. Diesel, fuel, tires, trucks. And so for the past couple of years, we have been losing money. This fund has actually been going into the red every year to provide the same level of service. We have to maintain a certain amount of money into this, in this fund in order to keep the fund healthy. If we go below that goal, then when we have our city audit, the auditors come in and say, you have a bad mark on your audit because you've allowed this fund to dip below your stated goals. Our stated goal is 25%. If we slip to 23, 22, nothing bad really happens. Well, we're down below 10 now, so we're supposed to have a 25% fund balance, and we now have a below 10. So if you were a business, you would be talking to your lawyer about filing bankruptcy and seeking some kind of protection, because you can't keep the business running. That's the reason why we really don't have any choice as a council but to raise these rates. This is the minimum that we can really do and start to turn this so that the fund balance not only doesn't sink anymore, but actually starts to tick up a little bit. This fund balance is projected to take us up a percent or two to maybe achieving 11% or 12, I think, or somewhere around there, Jim, and I think that's about right. I'd love to say this is the only increase that we're going to need to do, but I cannot promise you that, because some of these costs are fixed, and they're fixed by other people. Whoever controls the cost of diesel, whoever that might be, I don't know. But the tipping fees at the county facility where we take our trash has gone up. We can't control some of that. So for anybody watching and you wonder, oh my God, they're going up 10%, that's a lot at one chunk. It is. You're right. And that's just a little background as to why. Councilmember Fernandez.
I would also like to say that in past years, the councils have not been, they have not actually looked at the cost and looked at what the rates need to be in a more gradual way, which is part of why it's coming out as a one-time or a larger increase than what we'd like to see at one time. And I know this was all discussed at the budget process and establishing the budget and establishing the rates, but it is true, the council, the city does not, we pay a tipping fee that is established by an outside entity, the county, and there is no option. You pay the fee that they charge you in order to dispose of your trash at that facility. So that is not something that we can reduce the rate of. But I just wanted to say, it's something that we need to look at every year as part of the budget process.
Further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution approving subdivision plat application SP 22-03 for the plat of .63 plus or minus acres of property to be known as Overlook Oaks, Overlook Oaks Estates. Senior Planner Gus Carpus is here to explain.
As the mayor stated, we're looking at SP 22-03. It's a final plat for Overlook Oaks Estates, which is a piece of unaddressed property. The owner and applicant is a Hillsborough County Habitat for Humanity Housing Development Organization Incorporated. They've expanded their name a little bit. So this property is located along Overlook Drive. It is west of the Publix on East Bush. The proposal is to replat the south half of lots 18 and 19 through 21, and the north portion of, the north 24-foot of Lot 22, Block 4 of Temple of Terrace Overlook Number 2 into four single-family lots, and an out parcel to serve as a drainage and open space. Again, the parcel is .63 acres. This has been before the council before as different items. On November 16th, 2021, since the city council passed an ordinance approving a zoning reclassification for the site to rezone the property from commercial general to planned development. And then in January of 2022, they adopted a resolution approving site plan review application, approving the site plan layout, which is consistent with the plat that is before you tonight. And here is Overlook Estates. You've got four single-family parcels that enter onto Overlook Drive. Then you have a parcel along the back that's going to serve as drainage area and as an open space that would be maintained by a homeowners' association. I just included the setbacks and the other requirements that were approved as part of the site plan approval. That's the minimum lot area, the minimum setbacks. So staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution approving the subdivision plat application for the plat of .63 acres of the unaddressed property lying north of East Bush Boulevard and west of Overlook Drive into four single-family lots and an out parcel to serve as a drainage easement and open space. Any questions?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Carpus. The applicant here?
There. You're not the usual face that we see.
You're welcome to make comments. If you, you don't have to, it's up to you.
I need to.
Okay. Okay, very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmember, are there any questions? Councilmember Schisler.
You said we've already done this.
No, we went through the rezoning, then we approved the site plan, and now this is the plat, and the plat matches the site plan we approved. We haven't.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we've done this in different.
Because at one point, there were five houses.
Originally, that's what Ron wanted to do, and we said, no, that's not going to.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmembers, other questions? Okay, if none, is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution approving subdivision plat application SP 22-03 for the plat of .63 plus or minus acres of the property to be known as Overlook Oaks Estates.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion on the motion? None, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, deny sign? No nays. Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Gus. Next, is the resolution approving the St. Augustine and Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project Phase 3 Construction Engineering Administration Services to CPH, Inc. And our Utilities Director Troy Tinch is here to explain. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I'm here this evening to discuss the resolution before you requesting CPH conduct engineering oversight of Phase 3 of the St. Augustine Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project. I do want to note that CPH was the design team for all three phases. This is the third and final phase. They also conducted the engineering oversight for the first two phases. There's a little bit of a caveat with this request, because it is going to be sole source, and that is because that CPH was not selected under the new set of general engineering service contract firms. So we felt the best, though, that since they are the most familiar with the project, being the design team, being very familiar with the construction process, would actually be likely cheaper for the city to sole source this effort to them, to conduct that and finish out this project. If we brought in a new firm, we would have to likely go through the entire design process and familiarize themselves with the construction effort at hand. So, that said, staff recommends city council adopt a resolution authorizing the expenditure of $53,561.06 to CPH Incorporated for engineering oversight of Phase 3 of the St. Augustine and Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project. I'll stand for questions, if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, are there questions? Councilmember Schisler.
How many more projects do we have in the pipeline that we're not going to be able to use the new companies for that we just approved last meeting, and we're going to have to go back to the original people?
There may be one or two additional. For instance, Kimley Horn worked on Tupelo North, so if we have the need for engineering oversight for that particular project, we would likely try and sole source that effort. However, all new design projects will be utilizing the five new firms that were selected, as well as any survey or geotechnical services that be required for at least the next three years.
Just for giggles, could we, is, do we have any idea what it would cost us to do this? I mean, it seems like almost a backdoor approach to, well, I didn't get my bid in time.
Right.
Let me continue, still doing work for the city.
Understandable, and again, we're looking, trying to look at this as a cost savings measure, in that if we were to try and bring in another firm, they would have to familiarize themselves with the entire design process. Different firms sometimes have different opinions about how things should be put together, and it could prolong the process.
You're butting heads.
Yes.
Potentially butting heads going forward.
So it's not something that we had envisioned, but it's just unfortunately the way it worked out. So we will, there is a potential for at least one more project that I can think of, and that, again, would be the Tupelo North listation project.
Maybe we could, before that becomes an issue, we could get one of the guys, one of the new companies to sharpen their pencil a little bit so that we can make the transition and get away.
Oh, absolutely. We have the contracts that are all but ready to be sent out. I need to sit down with the city manager, and we review those. It's been through legal, so once we get those in place, we will absolutely be using the new firms.
So we don't have, we don't have contracts with them yet?
No, the contracts have not been signed as of yet.
Oh, okay. All right, okay. That makes a difference.
We have approval. You've granted us approval to do that, so we will be moving forward.
Okay, all right.
Other questions, council members? I have one. So I understand the benefits of this, they're obvious, but I need some additional assurance. This qualifies for sole source exception to the bid under, this is, because I mean, how could this be sole source? It's beneficial, but they're not the only people that sell the service. So we're good doing sole source, because that doesn't seem to fit.
I found one definition that, because I was looking this up too right now, and one definition that I found, it talked about initially the purchasing of an item, and it says, item required must be identical to equipment already in use by the end user to ensure compatibility of equipment, and that item is only available from one source. Then it says, the same reasoning applied in the continuation of research situation. And so this seems like, since they extended the purchase of an identical item to also the continuation of a research situation, what Mr. Tinch has described seems to fall into that second one, that this is a continuation, I guess, of a, say it again, your project, your design, so.
So the argument would be that this is the only company that can carry this project as originally envisioned forward.
Yes.
Other questions, council members? Very good. If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution for the St. Augustine and Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project Phase 3 Construction Engineering Administration Services to CPH Incorporated.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays. Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Tinch.
Thank you.
Is there any carryover council business from previous meetings? Or, okay, new business in board reports. So we have one item on the agenda under this. The mayor is responsible annually to appoint city council members to serve as our liaisons and representatives to various boards and committees and councils. Some of these Some of these are county boards, some of these are state organizations, some of them are local, there's a variety. And so, I'm gonna briefly read them because I, I think there's a lot of people out there that think that this is all your council members do, is come here twice a month and sit here for a couple hours, and I'm here to tell you that that is not the, that's not even close to the truth. This is, this is the, this is the tip of the iceberg here. So, keep in mind that every one of these assignments often, and in fact, usually involves various subcommittees within this organization that we serve on. So, I think some of us serve, spend more of our time really on these appointments than we do doing city council stuff. So, these are the selections for the year for discussion and approval by the council, for consideration, and I'll start with the council member, Abel. These are in alphabetical order. The Affordable Housing Advisory Board, council member Abel, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Career Source of Tampa Bay Board of Directors, the School Support Committee Liaison, and the Soaring City Innovation Partnership Liaison. Moving on to the Vice Mayor Chambers, the Board of Adjustment Liaison, the Library Board Liaison, the Municipal Code Enforcement Board Liaison, the Centennial Celebration Committee, the Advisory Board of the Arts Council, it's a Hillsborough County Board, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board as an alternate position, council member Fernandez is the Cultural Assets Commission, that is the county commission, the county, I hate to say county commission because it's confusing, but the county board that evaluates grant requests and funding for significant cultural events, the Gasparilla Parades, the Gasparilla Arts Festival, the Night Parade, there's a ton of them, host them, that, that's a very time-consuming board to be, have done that, and, and to evaluate all these boards, it takes a whole day when the board, when the applications come in, it takes like a day. The Hillsborough County River, Hillsborough River Inter Local Planning Board, I believe you've served on that before, that's the, the board comprised of Hillsborough County, City of Tampa, and City of Temple Terrace that makes decisions concerning anything to do with the Hillsborough River, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, the Riverwatch Task Force Liaison. Councilmember Schisler has the, he is my alternate to the Hillsborough County Training, Hillsborough County Transportation Planning Organization, or the TPO, the Hillsborough County Regional Transit, HART, which I think right now is probably consuming more of his time than anything else, Temple Terrace Audit Committee, Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club Strategic Action Committee, the Police Pension Board, and the Fire Pension Board. I'd also like to note, there's a bit of a change because we, I, I am proposing to take a little bit away from councilman, or councilmember Schisler because of the workload that has come to be the heart. He, he chairs several subcommittees on heart, and heart has really taken more time than it used to, so we've tried to peel back a little bit off of you to try to even it out a little bit. Myself, I am the representative of the city on the Hillsborough County Transportation Planning Organization, the TPO, also on some subcommittees and chair of some subcommittees in that capacity, Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development Corporation, the Florida League of Cities, the Florida League of Mayors, the Tourism Development Council, which is a county commission or board that deals with issues involving tourism development. That's not just recreational tourism, it's business tourism, also seminars, conferences, those types of things, the Police Pension Board, the Fire Pension Board, and the Suncoast League of Cities. And so, prior to a motion, I'd like to open, this has a big impact on everybody, so if there's any discussion prior to calling for a motion, I would open the discussion up.
I have a question.
Councilmember Fernandez.
In the past, we've had, and this could be, I'm just not recognizing the name, the Innovation Alliance that has been working to redevelop the area where University Square Mall is and, and approaching Temple Terrace and maybe some small parts of Temple Terrace. Do we have a formal appointment of a council member that is a liaison with that group, or is that something that council members could do as an option?
No, that's, that's council member Abel, that's the Soaring City Innovation Partnership. They've changed her name a few times.
That's why I was thinking, I wasn't recognizing the name.
That's the Soaring City, that's the old Innovation Alliance, then the Innovation Partnership, now it's the Soaring City Innovation Partnership.
I did not recognize it.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
Yep. Any other questions, comments, protests, complaints? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the appointments?
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, thank you very much. I have one other thing under new business that I'd like to bring up that has to do with this. The council, I don't remember when, was a year, year and a half, two years, something in the past, we, by resolution, established a centennial committee for the city to, it's comprised of city employees and different people. Now, Vice Mayor Chambers is now on it, we just appointed him. I would like the council's permission, and I need a motion to, in the form of a resolution, I need a motion so we can revise the resolution that established the committee. I would like the council to consider keeping former council member Sherri Donahue on this committee, which would mean that we'd have to add a position because we don't have a current vacancy, and I don't really think we want to kick anybody off because they're doing a great job. Couple reasons. One is she's been doing this for a year or more, she's been a pretty integral part of this process, and a lot of the other members work well with her, and she works well with them. Another benefit to this is, as you now know, her new role is the president, CEO of the chamber, and I think it would be extremely beneficial to have the chamber involved in this as well. And so, if that is agreeable, I would ask if somebody would be happy to, to make a motion to expand this committee by one member and appoint Sherri Donahue to remain on it.
I have, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Is this something that would, we would actually do better at expanding the committee but saying that the member would come from the chamber, for the chamber to appoint? I'm not saying not to appoint Sherri, I'm just saying, as a, going forward in the process, it would make sense to me for the chamber to actually, if we say we'd like the chamber to be involved, and I think that that is a good thing, to have the, the business community participating in this, then it seems like the chamber should be the one, they should pick their representative. That would, that would just be my suggestion.
Well, the, I, I won't have any philosophical problem with that, except that when we established a committee, every council member appointed one member, and so it would differ from the spirit of the original resolution in that, that, that committee is all comprised of people that were appointed by one of us. So, it would now be granting another entity appointment rights, and then I'm, I'm a little concerned because then what happens then is the Golf and Country Club come forward, or the Business Alliance, or the Rotary Club, you know, and they're all important to us, I just don't know if we want to, I, I'm a little concerned about opening that door, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to increase the Centennial Committee by one member and appoint Sherri Donahue on that committee.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, thank you, and thank you for the, that's a good thought, thank you for that, and if there's a vacancy for anybody in the future, maybe we have a conversation about that, so, thank you. Any other new business? Vice Mayor Chambers.
It's not really new business, but if you could indulge me, I had a chance to think about the question you asked me earlier about when did Lightfoot become a senior center? I was really wrong about 10 years, but Lightfoot always had a component way back in the early 70s, two people, Owen and Edith Gerch started what was called the Golden Age Club, and it was only on Fridays, then it expanded to Tuesdays and Fridays, and somewhere in the mid 1990s, and I don't remember the date, the city got a grant to do the transportation program that it is still doing, picking up seniors. At the same time, it entered into agreement with Hillsborough County Aging Services to be a SNAP site for food and other programming. That's really when the focus went to a five-day-a-week senior program. So, there's no formal change from rec center to senior center, but that's just the purpose of it, so.
Other new business? If not, city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in the spirit of the fact that it's January and we talk about New Year's resolutions, I'd like to invite Tywin up to the podium to talk about the city's Commit to Fit program.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Tywin, and I'm the fitness coordinator down at the Family Recreation Complex, and I'm here to invite you to participate in our Commit to Fit program for 2023. So, I've given you guys all flyers and t-shirts for Commit to Fit, and so, in case you're not familiar, Commit to Fit is a health and wellness initiative for city employees as well as city council members and the mayor. So, essentially, there's a point system, and participants will, will exercise at home in the fitness center, there's a daily step count, and our group fitness classes down at the Family Recreation Complex add to our prizes. So, some new things for this year that we've added, we've added a fitness, health, nutrition courses that we're going to be doing throughout the event, and as well as event signups, things like Trot Through the Terrace, Tough Mudder, any of those types of races, and, oh, and the event is going to be between February 1st and March 31st. And to close, we'd like to thank United Healthcare and the City of Human Resources Department for providing wellness dollars to cover the cost for the prizes and the classes for the employees, and we'd hope to see you guys at the Family Complex to register for the event, work out in the fitness center, or participate in any of our fitness classes.
Good. Thank you very much, and I will tell everybody who's watching this, if you go to the fitness center while this young man is working, it's wonderful. If you go when he's off and he's not working, and he's in there working out, he will make you feel weak and puny. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up, the last item I have is the date of the July, first meeting in July for the city council. At the last council meeting, we had talked about the fact that this fall on Independence Day, and the city clerk did some great research, he went all the way back to 1961 to see how often, well, not how often, but to see what the alternatives have, have been utilized by the councils in the past, and the, the last time this came up, I believe it was 2017, and the council at that time chose to just cancel that meeting, and prior to that, they've rescheduled one week forward, and then in one instance way back when, they actually rescheduled to an alternate day, to an actual Thursday versus a Tuesday, so we would do whatever your pleasure is.
So, this is, I've questioned before, other people might have questions too, but I don't know how you can predict, you might not know the answer to this, this far out. Some of our meetings, we have two or three items that could be easily postponed, and it's no big deal. Other times, if we don't meet for two weeks, it's costing somebody money because we're holding up their project, or, you know, their rezoning request, or their site plan, or something like that, and I'm not a big fan of doing that if we, so, any idea what, I mean, how could we predict what might be coming down the pike in July?
Probably is in a good way. I think the reason we wanted to bring it to your attention now is because we know it's a busy time of the year for folks with vacations and things like that, and also would give us time ahead, ahead of the calendar to, in case we had issues like this, we could tell whoever we're working with, listen, in July, if you don't plan it right, you're only going to have one meeting, for example, if that was your choice, or, or whatever the calendar might be. So, in our opinion, the earlier we can get to that and then have an understanding on the calendar, the better for everybody.
So, council, of course, it's up to the council. My thoughts are, I'd rather reschedule it for the week before or a day after, something, and, because I'm going to be out of town, I think I already mentioned, the second meeting of July, I won't be here. If there's something particularly controversial, I know we like to have a full council if we can, it's not hard and fast, but we prefer to have a full council so everybody gets to, and I know I'm not going to be here for the second meeting in July already, and so that's going to put, if we cancel the first meeting, that's going to put me out for a whole month.
I would prefer to reschedule for later in that week if we could.
I don't know what your plans might be, if you have holiday plans, is that?
I mean, I would prefer to reschedule for, in, later in that week, the same.
That week?
Yeah.
Is that good with you?
I like that, yes.
Later in the week, is that good with you? I don't know what your plans might, do you know?
I'm here.
Later in that week?
Later in the week, Thursday.
That work for everybody?
Perfect.
Okay. Does that work for the city manager too? Because, I mean, you're part of this too.
Sure, it'll work for me, and we'll just make sure there's no conflict with this room on that Thursday. Madam Clerk, do you know if anybody meets?
I'll lift the top of my head.
Okay, we'll confirm that, and if there isn't.
Board of adjustments later on Thursdays, but it's later in the month, so we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll work, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Nope. City attorney.
Thank you. I, I have nothing to actually report, but I would like to ask the council to consider making a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the warranty deed and any other required documents conveying the Rollerson Ranch property to Terrace Real Estate Holdings LLC, which was the entity that was created by Karen Patel to own, to take ownership of the property. I'm hoping that there will be a closing later this week. We're working, Mr. Patel's attorney and I are working on the documents to do that, and so if it doesn't happen this week, it would be very early next week, and I looked at the Richmond warranty deed, and the city manager had signed that one, so I'd like to continue and do it the same way, so if someone can make the motion to allow our city manager to execute the documents.
Okay, before we make that motion, a quick, couple of questions about, suppose the, assuming the closing happens and we get the funds, where's that money going to go?
It would, it, immediately, it would go into the escrow agent's hands, and, you know, we'd make sure that everybody's gotten what they've bargained for, and that all conditions of the contract have been met, and then the escrow agent would then transfer the money to our finance director's, whatever account he's designating for that, so.
Okay, and so, the reason I ask the question is, I, we, I, if I'm trying to remember, I think the council approved my request on this. We were going to earmark 1.5 million of those revenue, of that revenue, to set aside, to give us that money to acquire, we don't need, hopefully, we wouldn't need all of it, hopefully, but to acquire the property and decide on a site for a prospective police department, and I think the remaining funds that were left over, we were going to pay down the short-term note, or pay it off, or something, isn't that what we decided?
I ask Finance Director Ingram to come up so that we are all on the same page.
Good question. Yes, the 1.1.5, what, is to go toward the police building fund, that's, I believe that's what you were referencing. There, I want to get the numbers right, so I'm turning to the page in our budget book where it does outline the uses of the reserves. So, 1.5 would go to the police building reserve. We would have another 2.647, 6, 6.7 to be determined reserve from the land sales revenue. We had talked about that could be decided at, by We had talked about that could be decided that, by council at a later date, they just want to put in a rainy day fund to go back toward the general fund, or if you have a specific purpose in mind, that makes up about 4.1 million of the, from the sale, the rest, the balance would pay off the variable rate loan that we have right now with Republic Bank. It has a balloon payment on October 1st, 2023 due, we could go ahead and pay it off now, it's a variable rate, which means every month, the interest rate is now going up, so we would save some money in interest the sooner we are able to do that.
Okay, so, council, may I suggest--
Now, the 1.5, are we setting that up as a sinking fund, or are we setting that up as just a, a, another, another reserve?
And I think, I think the sinking fund might require a resolution to do that.
Yeah, we, we haven't, we have talked about both of those, I would confer with our, with Jeff Wolf to see, to get his input, we may want to do that as a sinking fund and do the resolution, or it could be a restricted balance in our fund balance.
You could encumber it, and then it's, and it's locked in.
Yes, yes.
Okay, do it that way, and just leave the money sitting in the general fund.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, council, can I propose this, if it's, and you tell me if this is, would it be a good idea for us to just make a motion authorizing city manager to sign the documents to close? And then, once the funds are received, and all the, whatever's hanging leftover from escrow, and all that's filtered out, we have X number of dollars left from the sale, then perhaps we put that on the agenda as an agenda item for us to then have a discussion and say, okay, this much goes towards this, this much goes towards that, would that be a good way to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, in the meantime, Mr. Ingram can check with our auditors to find out anything, any quirky issues that--
Okay, well, that, that gives them time to say, well, this is the best use, and this, this helps us the most, and without making that decision, we don't have the money yet anyway, so--
It could take a month for the dust to settle for everything.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, okay, is that good? Okay, so right now, we need a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the warranty deed and other associated documents at the closing.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I have one more question regarding money. A while back, I think last meeting maybe, we got a, I don't even remember where the money came from, oh, yes I do, it was an unexpected $6,000 and change we got from a, from a settlement for a class action suit that, I, I don't even know if any of us knew that we were even in it, but it was for auto parts or some kind of--
Price fixing.
Right, and I don't know that we can put our finger any, on any particular fund where we can say, yes, we lost $6,000 out of that fund, I think it just got swallowed up over, I mean, we don't really have a significant loss that we're trying to repay. So, did we ever figure out where that money would go? It goes into a fund to be used for what?
General fund.
Yeah, I thought it was going into the general fund.
Just, just the general? Okay, so, do you have a particular use for that?
Well, as, as I've mentioned to the council in some of our weekly reports, one of the projects we're looking at is actually improvements here to this building, and we do have a budget amount for that, that the council was generous enough to give us. With everything else going up in costs, I, I assume that that would be something that we may have to look at in terms of, you know, whether the budget will be enough, so if you would want it to allocate those dollars to that project, obviously, we wouldn't spend them unless we needed them, but it'd be good to have some extra flexibility.
Yeah, well, you'll need them, we didn't give you enough money to go far. So, we gave them $20,000 in the budget to do city council lobby, the conference room, to fix the wood floor out here, to do some, a lot of it is paint and stuff like that, I mean, it's not, you know, we're not doing major construction, but we're trying to spruce up the public areas of the building to make it look a little more professional. We gave them $20,000, I'd like to, if we don't have a specific use for this, $6,000 to get swallowed up, we won't even know where it went. I'd like to give that $6,000 and change to that, and give them $26,000 and change. Another $6,000 on that might make a difference, otherwise, we won't even know where it went. Is that--
So, when you're talking about the work, is any of that going to be focused on the audiovisual broadcasting or anything, it's, it's cosmetic?
Separate.
Okay.
It's cosmetic, it's the wooden floor, the paint, the, trying to figure out the glass door situation so that we have security without having vaults.
Yeah.
Things like that, it's not, the AV's in a different fund. So, I don't know, the council wants to do that, or you want it to just go into general fund?
Well, it's going to general fund anyway, no matter what you do.
Well, I know, when I'm putting, I'm just, you're, I'm upping their allot, their spending limit to 26 instead of 20.
Well, I, I do have a request that has come about from other people out in the public, and that is, it's very hard to access the city offices right now, and there are a lot of members of the public that do not like the lack of access, and I agree with them. So, I would be willing to add this money to the budget allotment, but I would like also, through this process, to make this, the city offices more accessible to the public.
Thank you, councilmember Fernandez, actually, that's one of the things we're working on, one of the recommendations that, that I would have in working with our staff would actually be to remove the security doors that are here on the first floor. As the mayor was just alluding to, they, they create, obviously, they create an obstacle, they're meant to create an obstacle, the security door, but they malfunction quite a bit, they don't provide access to the city clerk's office, and I can tell you, our city clerk does a great job, and her staff, and that's a resource that, and if you go to any city hall, most city halls in the country, usually, that's a place where that gets a lot of traffic, foot traffic from the public, so she and I have talked about this, and we're in agreement that if we remove those doors, we'd allow access to her, her office. So, we'd have, the first floor would be truly a customer service floor, utility billing, permits, city clerks, we'd still restrict access to the upper floors and to the attorney's office because those really aren't walk-in traffic areas.
Is this okay with everybody?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other business to come before the council? Any other directors? Okay, if there is nothing more, we will be adjourned.